I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the presence of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Certainly. Supervisor Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilwoman Iasili.
Here.
Councilwoman Pell.
Here.
Councilwoman Martel.
Here.
All right, let's start with the review of the draft agenda. So we're gonna have on Tuesday, a lot of public hearings.
Ooh.
Yeah. Jim, are you with us? The first public hearing is gonna be to consider amending the Town Code, Chapter 64, to eliminate term limits for zoning and planning board members. The second public hearing is to consider amending the Town Code, Chapter 330-163 and Chapter 330-181, to reduce the term of zoning board and planning board members from seven years to four years. Public hearing number three is to consider amending Town Code, Chapter 298, to amend Article 5, to change a definition of income for purposes of the exemptions. And public hearing number four is to consider amending Town Code, Chapter 298, to amend Article 11, to change a definition of income for purposes of exemptions. Public hearing number five is to consider amending Section 235, Subdivision 4, noise exemptions, to allow for the use of small speakers outdoors. Public hearing number six is to consider the acquisition of 10 Ferry Road in the Village of North Haven, and to amend the CPF project plan and CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property. Public hearing number seven is to consider the acquisition of 199 Dune Road in the Village of Quogue, and to amend the CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property. Public hearing number eight is to consider the acquisition of lands located on the west side of Northview Hills Court, in the hamlet of New York, and to amend the CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property. The ninth public hearing is to consider the acquisition of 3841 Lake Avenue in the hamlet of New York, and to amend the CPF priority plan and CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property. And the 10th public hearing is to consider the change of target area for parcels currently designated as agricultural lands preservation target area to open space target area for CPF acquired parcels located at 66, 68, 78 Sag Road, and 135 Paksabog Lane, Village of Sagaponac, and to consider amending the CPF management and stewardship plan. All right. So, first, let's go ahead with the resolutions. The Town Board Resolution ID number 20...
This was 10.
Sorry. What? This was...
That's my question.
Oh, Town Board Resolution 2025-1021, resolution authorizing acceptance of a maintenance bond for Atlantic Golf staff housing. Town Board Resolution ID number 50731, to authorize the purchase of trailers from American Cargo Group Trailers, LLC, using the Sourcewell contract.
Town Board Resolution ID 50713, authorized purchases of international trucks, heavy equipment repairs and parts, to Sciocic Truck Sales, Inc., using Town of Huntington contract.
Town Board Resolution 50712, authorized purchase of overhead roll-up door repair with American Industry Door, Inc., using Suffolk County contracts. Town Resolution, Town Board Resolution 50784, co-sponsored with the supervisor, authorized supervisor to sign contract with L.K. McLean, Associate Engineer and Survey, to provide construction administration service for 30 Club Lane, Barn and Sci Harbor.
Town Board Resolution ID 50769, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, Councilmembers Iasili and Pell, authorized supplemental funding for WQIP sanitary system remediation at Southampton Animal Shelter.
Um, just on the prior one, 507...I mean, yeah, what was it? 50784, Christine mentioned that the, um, there was something that should be added in the third to the last resolved. Did she mention it to you?
No. I went in there, but I had to come right in here. What's the...
At the, where it says, "For one additional one-year extension," and the third to the last resolved.
Okay.
You see it?
Mm-hmm.
Do you see it, Cindy? She wanted, she thought we should put one-year extension at the recommendation of the highway, the superintendent of highways.
Okay.
Do you have the change? I'll get it from Christine.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I don't, I don't see that here on my...
Okay, we can send it over to you.
Okay, that would be great. As long as you approve it, I'm...
Yes, I'm fine with it.
50769, if you could add me, please.
Absolutely.
Town Board Resolution ID number 50766, to authorize the purchase of fleet management services from the New York State contract with Automotive Rentals, Inc., ARI. And just that there's something in the second to last resolved about plumbing, and I don't know if that was incorrectly put, but I didn't have an opportunity to hear back yet, so we might have to tweak it Tuesday, when we get the information. Good? Okay.
Town Board Resolution ID 50787, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, authorized the purchase of Priority Dispatch System, annual maintenance, from Medical Priority Consultants, Incorporated, doing business as Priority Dispatch for the Police Department. I'm gonna assume that's supposed to be Dispatch System, 'cause that's what it says everywhere else in the resolution.
Okay.
So, Cindy, if you could correct that?
Yes.
Move to A. Town Board Resolution ID 50790, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, authorized the supervisor to sign any and all documents with Integraf Corporation, doing business as Hexagon Safety and Infrastructure for the Town Police Department.
Town Board Resolution ID number 50786, to authorize the supervisor to execute a contract with DTN for Weather Sentry Online Public Safety. Town Board Resolution ID number 50789, to authorize the supervisor to execute a no-cost contract extension with Cornell Cooperative Extension of Suffolk County, to partner with the town for passive permeable reactive barriers at the Riverside Maritime Park.
Supervisor, if I could be added to that one?
I self too, please. Town Board Resolution 50788, co-sponsored with Councilman Pell, this is to authorize the supervisor to sign any and all documents with Co-File Technologies, Inc., for document restoration. We also have Town Board Resolution 50723, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara, to authorize the supervisor to sign the 2025 Love Michael, Inc., Community Program Grant.
If I could be added to that, too?
Bill, would you like to be? Yes.
Me, too. Oh, am I already on here?
Yes. Oh, boy.
Supervisor?
Yes, please. Town Board Resolution ID number 50785, co-sponsored by Councilwoman McNamara, to authorize the supervisor to sign the documentation necessary to accept the 2026 Police Traffic Safety Grant through the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee.
Can I be added to that, Cindy?
Yes, certainly.
Town Board Resolution ID 50770, co-sponsored with Councilwoman Martel, award and authorize supervisor to sign contract with AC Schultes, Inc., for quail run test flooring.
I think the last whereas clause on page 19 should say, "For one-year period, the option of the town by Town Board Resolution." That's the note that's in my...So, I mean, we can send that to you.
I'm sorry, yes. Is that possible? Just, I wanna make sure I get it correct.
All right. Town Board Resolution ID number 50791, co-sponsored by the entire board, to award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Chesterfield Associates, Inc., for Southampton Animal Shelter sanitary system upgrade.
Excellent. Thanks, guys.
Town... Oh, we're all in there.
I think, I think once that, you're gonna stop that by yourself, once the award is started.
Town Board Resolution ID number 50721, to declare items surplus and authorize the disposal of vehicles and equipment.
Town Board Resolution 50762, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara, to be called, amend Town Board Resolution 2025-1034, and award and authorize supervisor to sign contract with Chesterfield Association for North Sea Road Shoreline Stabilization, which is greatly needed.
Town Board Resolution ID number 50764, 2025 Notice to Bidders for Glass Pulverizer.
Could you add me to that, please?
That'll be really good. We can have Tom come in and talk to us about what we're gonna do with that. Town Board Resolution ID number 50765, to amend the 2025 adopted budget for vehicle purchase. And Town Board Resolution ID number 50813, to amend the 2025 adopted budget for waste management, equipment repair. Town Board Resolution ID number 50783, to amend the 2025 budget for various departments. Town Board Resolution ID number 50749, to amend the 2025-2029 capital budget and add a capital project for 133 Montauk Highway IT infrastructure. Town Board Resolution ID number 50748, to authorize arbitrage payment to the U.S. Treasury.
You missed one?
Oh.
Twenty-six.
Town Board Resolution ID number 50750, to amend the 2025-2029 capital budget for the Flanders Community Center outdoor improvements. Town Board Resolution ID number 50781, to authorize the closure of certain capital projects. Town Board Resolution ID number 50817, co-sponsored by the entire board, the resolution adopting... Resolution of adoption, amending Town Code, Chapter 298, to amend Article 5, to change a definition of income for purposes of the exemptions. And that's after the public hearing, of course. And Town Board Resolution ID number 50818, co-sponsored by the entire board, oh, so was the last one, a resolution of adoption, amending Town Code, Chapter 298, to amend Article 11, to change a definition of income for purposes of the exemptions.
Town Board Resolution 50609, co-sponsored with the entire board, resolution of adoption, amending Chapter 235, Subsection 4, noise exemptions, to allow for small speakers. Comment on that?
Really should say to include small speakers.
Maybe, yeah. And I just, I think that we should really have this run in tandem with some of the other efforts that we're trying to do with respect to the reduction of construction noise. I know that we're working on that with Shawn Cambridge. So, I don't know if this should be tabled until we have the other bill introduced.
That's gonna be a separate section of code.
Yeah. Okay. I just, I think it would be a good idea to just consider it all together, but if that's your...
Public hearing is good, isn't it? Is that part of it?
This is a scheduled public hearing. I mean, I guess, you know, we can schedule the public hearing, it doesn't matter.
No, this is a notice of adoption, the public hearing's being held.
Yeah, the public hearing will be on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Shawn was saying that perhaps the other changes would go under the construction code section instead of noise.
Okay, fair enough, it's fine.
But it was good that you brought this up, because, you know, Ryan Murphy said that we need something about the speakers. It's difficult for them to enforce the noise ordinance unless we were specific about it.
Sure, sure. All right, thank you.
Town Board Resolution ID 50726, authorized waiver of Parks and Recreation Facility use fee for the iconic Invitational Cross Country Race.
Councilwoman McNamara, can I be added to that?
Sure. Town Board Resolution ID 50799, designate September 2025 as National Recovery Month in the town of Southampton, and I would like to read that resolution when we adopt it on Tuesday. Town Board Resolution ID 50732, waive portable stage fee for inlet-to-inlet beach cleanup and fall fair fundraiser. Town Board Resolution ID 50819, extend approval of change in zoning classification from CR40 to multifamily planned residential district for the application entitled to preserve its South Country Road, in order to facilitate development of 78 affordable housing lottery units, less than six units per acre, and one superintendent unit with over six acres of open space, 38 percent in the hamlet of Quayog.
Would you like to just go through this resolution, because there's some, I think, revisions that should take place.
The resolution, the whereas, that's third from the bottom, it references a letter dated September 3rd, and maybe there was a letter dated September 3rd, but the original request was dated August 25th.
At the recommendation of planning, they submitted a new letter that requested the 12 months. Actually, they requested 18 months, we're giving them 12.
Do we have a copy of the old letter?
We're giving them 12? What, what, Bill?
Do we have a copy of the old letter?
Planning has it, Teresa had it when she...
I have the old letter, but I don't have the new letter, so we should probably get the copy of the new letter.
I'll have her forward that to me as well.
And then...
Are you alter, are you changing it?
Well...
No, that's correct, that, that letter was September 3rd.
Apparently, there was a revised letter or a supplemental letter.
Well, and we did reach out and ask for the original letter, 'cause we didn't have it on file in my office either.
You don't have the original letter either?
I think we have it now, yes. On it yesterday.
It went to Kim, Shelley, Janice, Kathleen, and the entire Town Board.
Yesterday.
And the supervisor, yesterday, yes.
So, and then in the last sentence of that same whereas clause, where it says that Suffolk County has approved the award...
You have to be quiet. Come in, please. Just about done here.
That, that, I, I request that it include that, where it says that the county has approved the grant funding, but it's conditioned on the town providing matching funds. You know, just to be accurate with what we're saying in this.
I think ours says the same thing.
Yeah.
So who's gonna go first?
Well, I don't know.
And honestly, I think we could spend our money for how, for affordable housing a lot better way than on this project.
It says, so let's add that it says, "Subject to a commitment equal to or greater in matching funds from the town of Southampton." I mean, I can give these wording to Cindy if someone objects.
Sure, that would, that would be great.
Okay. And then in the next whereas clause, where it says, where the applicant is awaiting approval of Suffolk County Department of Health Services, I don't know that they applied, so I would...
They did.
Just like to know that. You can confirm that?
They stated in their letter that they applied, I have no reason to, to think that they're lying.
And number two...
I think I would like to see proof of that.
Number two, I know that they didn't apply for their final subdivision approval, so that should get tweaked, just, just to be accurate.
Because what they say and what they do could be two different things. I'd like to, to get a copy of the receipt that they did file with Suffolk County.
It's being reported that they're close to commencing construction, and that's, you know, not accurate, so I don't wanna lead people to think that it's more, further along than it is. And then, you know, in the last whereas clause, where it says, "The Town Board believes," the applicant requested 18 months, but the Town Board believes a one-year extension is appropriate.
Like, we could put the planning staff.
Well, I don't think it's appropriate to put that, because the code only allows for two six-months extensions, so we couldn't give them 18 months anyway, unless we're gonna change the code.
So, we could just put the Town Board is authorizing a one-year extension.
Okay. Okay. Is someone gonna provide all those changes to it?
Moore, if you wanna change it however you want, and give it to me, and then I'll, I'll pay it for Sunday.
Yeah, I'll do that. I'll give, I'll give the changes to it.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to have planning look at it as well.
Town Board Resolution ID number 50751, to appoint Brendan Morris to environmental analyst position in land management. Town Board Resolution ID number 50715, to appoint Eva Aquino to ordinance inspector, Spanish-speaking position from civil service list. Town Board Resolution ID number 50716, to appoint Gustavo Tizuli to ordinance inspector, Spanish-speaking position from the civil service list. Town Board Resolution ID number 50755, to appoint Jacob Sutherland to public safety dispatcher one in the police department. Town Board Resolution ID number 50717, to appoint Jorge Garcia to ordinance inspector, Spanish-speaking position from the civil service list.
Town Board Resolution ID 50763, authorize town personnel to attend the 2026 Association of Towns Annual Meeting and Training School.
Town Board Resolution ID number 50767, to reappoint Lucy Gorey, stall assessor for the town of Southampton. Town Board Resolution ID number 50724, to terminate an employee in the highway department.
Town Board Resolution ID 50814, notice of public hearing to consider the acquisition of property located at 1232 North Sea Road in the hamlet of North Sea. I believe the entire board should be on that. I don't know why I'm the only sponsor on that.
Yes.
Yeah, I could be added to that.
50814.
Yes, please.
Yes. Please, I self too.
Town Board Resolution ID number 50703, to authorize the acquisition of 10 Ferry Road, co-sponsored by the entire board, in the Village of North Haven, and to amend the CPF project plan and the CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property. Town Board Resolution ID number 50705, co-sponsored by the entire board, to authorize the acquisition of lands located on the west side of Northview Hills Court, in the hamlet of New York, and to amend the CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property. And then there's one add-on. Town Board Resolution ID number 50823, to authorize the supervisor to sign an amendment to the agreement with Southampton Youth Services, Inc., as it relates to the facility's roof. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. So, let's move forward with the rest of the work session.
Christine will provide changes to the ones that we discussed, and then Cindy, you're going to provide the changes for the last one, that Mr. Smith will do, and I'll do the... We'll wait for those before we're able to finalize the changes.
Okay, so we're, next up is an update on the activities at the North Sea Maritime Center. Mark Matthews is here to present.
It occurred, Mark Matthews, I'm the president of the North Sea Maritime Center. It occurred to me that we've been at this so long, we've been at this longer than you've been sitting here. I mean, you're all part of the town, you know what we're doing, and I know that Jackie briefed you recently on what's going on. But I thought I'd take this opportunity to introduce the board, or most of the board, to you, 'cause they're very active and very good citizens of the community. We have Ann Reisman, right here in the middle, former president, she was a scientist for 35 years at Brookhaven Labs, a member of the town's sustaining community for years, and a very active town resident for more than 50 years. Lynn Ash isn't here, she's our secretary, North Sea resident for many years, taught at South Hampton Schools, she was director of the West Hampton Library and the Rogers Memorial Library. Sheila Caporetto, program director, North Sea resident for 10, 20 years, former member of the Southampton Landmark Board, year-round volunteer at Southampton Fresh Air Home. Connie Kleiman, over here, is the treasurer, Bay, Bullhead, Bay resident for decades, has an MBA from NYU, she was the CFO of Liberty Science Center for 25 years, and also the CFO for Carnegie Hall. Mark Anletti, everybody knows Mark. There on the end with the white shirt, Vice President, born in Southampton, always active in our community, founding member of SYS and president of SYS for a decade, president of the Southampton Golf Club. Together with his son Alex, they run a fourth-generation landscaping business, now in its 87th year, real roots. Ted Anderson, he's not here, he's our legal director, he's a trial lawyer, was a managing director of Kilgore Law in Dallas, Texas for 20 years, he's, was the director and chair of Development Committee for the University of Albany, when they conducted their largest capital campaign in history. Interestingly, Ted's grand, great-grandfather was a founding member of the North Sea Fire Department. He has a home in Hampton Bays. Kevin Beatty, in the back there, fundraising director. Kevin's family began vacationing here 55 years ago, in the Eleanor Home and the North Sea Beach Colony since 2015. Kevin is now a vice president at the metadata solutions, previously was a vice president at IBM. He was the captain of a Division One lacrosse team at Providence College. Bruce Milliken, Bruce is retired management consultant, focused on technology-enabled business process involvement for Fortune 500 companies, primarily in the areas of finance, accounting, risk, and compliance. He owns a BS of Administration and Management Science and an MS in Industrial Administration from Carnegie Mellon University. We've got a good group, it's, it's just great. I wanna thank all of you guys and your predecessors for helping us get where we are now, and for continuing to help us reach the goal line, which we're hoping to get to very soon. I know Jackie's briefed you, and we hope that, and I talk to Matt all the time, and we know where they are, we know they're working on an egress thing. Matt thinks they'll go out to bid in, in probably October now, and with any luck, we'll be finished next year sometime. I wanted Ann to speak for a second, she's our former president, and she'll give you a very brief history of, of what we've, where we are, what we've done, what our, our efforts have been, so, Ann?
Yeah, as Mark said, I'm currently a director of the North Sea Maritime Center, and was the first president when the Citizens Group, which became the North Sea Maritime Center, was officially formed by councilperson Bridget Flynn in 2016. She, she formed it in order to get community input on what to do with this Tupperboy Boathouse, which they now had, and I can tell you the tortured history to get to it, and what's the best way for the town to use this facility. In 2015, the boathouse was officially designated a town landmark, and in 2016, the North Sea Maritime Center was incorporated. Six years later, in 2022, the town finalized a stewardship agreement with the NSMC. The stewardship agreement is in effect for an initial 25 years, renewable for an additional 25 years, so we'll all have to come back and see how they're doing. The steward can enter into contracts for programming consistent with the North Sea Maritime Mission, which is to provide interpretive, educational, and recreational programs to increase the awareness of historical and contemporary maritime activities, the Tupper Family, and the history of North Sea Harbor. So, this first committee, North Sea Maritime Center Committee, included people who have lived in the neighborhood forever. They were Mark Matthews, Lynn Ash, Sheila Caporetto, Sue Beager, and me. Currently, our 501(c)(3) committee has grown to nine very motivated activists, who are all happy to be working for the community on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
We've had lots of activities that eventually will be hosted at the Tupper Boathouse, but in the meantime, we discovered that there's lots of interest in many kinds of activities, that we've held a number of events, and Kevin Beatty's gonna give you a quick rundown on what we've done, and some of what we're going to do next.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you...
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Ann, and thank you for the group here. I actually am new to the board just about a year ago. It was September that I was asked to join, and it actually came out of my, my driving by on a regular basis, and also I keep my boat at Conscious Point Marina, and I was anxious to participate because I'd like to see it rise again and, and contribute to the community. So the events that have taken place over the past year, every month, we've sponsored educational events about whaling, about birds on the East End, about maritime life, and we've held an event every month where we've had close to a hundred people participate, and we've sponsored them for free. So it's been great. And obviously, we've, we've reached out as a fundraising person that's running most of the fundraising for the, for the North Sea Maritime Center. I'm out there pitching to get contributions at each of these events, but we, we focus on the education, and it's great participation. So we're tracking all the people that come, we, we incent them to participate in our newsletter, but it's been great participation. So every month, we, we do an event. We did something on, in June, when school was out, we sponsored a ice cream social for all the students, did a North Sea Schoolhouse. We did an art show where we had local artists that, that were, did art for specific North Sea. So it's been great in terms of our, our event participation and also topics. We do this intentionally because we want community participation, right? Because this is, our fundraising focus has been all about participation, making sure that we get not just a single set of donors, but full participation, and that's been what we've been getting to. So leading to our fundraising, we've actually had great success. So since, since, since this time last year, we've raised close to $700,000 in, towards our goal of a million. That's come from close to about a hundred and forty donors in totality, so that's great participation, and it's come from the community, right? So we haven't had a single donor, we've had lots of donors, and it's through our plaque campaign, where we have multiple approaches to people sponsoring plaques where they put their family name or their business name, and we've done that, you know, based on the different types of plaques they want to purchase, and some are doing anonymously or, or purchasing different levels of plaques.
If you'd like to use the easel behind you.
Mark, you should probably stick it over on this side because the computer.
The camera can pick it up.
Camera can get a photo.
So this, the plaques will be on the middle wall of the boat building. So just ideas so people can see what the plaque will look like if they're permanently mounted there.
Thank you, Jackie.
But again, our, our community center is for the community, so again, we're focusing on outreach to our community, and we've spent our efforts on the events, and we're doing one every month. We have one coming up next Friday that Mark is leading, Mark, that's at the cultural center, and the locations that we've been using obviously have not been at the North Sea Maritime, Maritime Center, which is what it will be for the future, and where we'll have these events, and we'll continue those. So our approach to fundraising, we've done, we're doing the plaque campaign, social media, we've reached out to the Southampton Chamber of Commerce. We, I've spoken at my community, which is North Sea, North Sea Beach Colony, where we speak at a bunch of HOAs, direct mail, and then we've done advertising through, you know, the, the local press. So we've had great success, and I guess my ask is of this or of your team is to give, continue to give us the support so that we can get continued contributions from the community. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks beautiful.
So this, the architects that the town has hired, you may know them, you certainly pay their bills, Eastern Architects, it's a fine historical architectural firm in New York, and they provided these renderings for us, so they're, you can really see what it's really going to be like when it's done. And we have one more event planned this summer, this fall, in terms of fundraising that is kind of special, and Mark Analletti is going to talk about that.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, board, for giving us a few minutes to speak. I am Mark Analletti. The first thing I want to say before I get into the, I know we're going to be short here, but I want to acknowledge Mark, Ann, Sheila, Lynn, these people literally live right around us, and in today's world of not in my backyard, for these people to spend a decade trying to get people to come to their neighborhood, to enjoy the neighborhood like they enjoy it, to me, is one of the main reasons I got involved. I was so impressed with their passion and want to expose this to the rest of the community. This is a sleeping treasure for this community, and it has to happen. So on that note, on Saturday, September twenty-seventh, we will be hosting a fundraiser at the home of Janet and Bob Posma. They are, they own a property, a beautiful property on Me Cox Road. It's the old Burglin property. I don't know if any of you know the Burglins. I know, I know Cindy does. It was a farm at one time. They have converted the barns into the beautiful barns. They, they renovated the original farmhouse. It is a beautiful piece of property, and it's a great connection of local history with our history here and what we're trying to do. So we're out there pushing that right now. We're, you know, we have an online presence, we have a great team of Connie and Bruce and, and others who are, I'm out there pushing. They're the bean counters. Thank God I have them, because it's not my forte. But I see a real community treasure here, much like we saw in, with SYS. I was in the same room nineteen ninety-nine. Vince Canucio was the supervisor at the time. Rick was part of our board for a while and, and was a key factor in getting an SLS up and running. What we saw then, obviously, it's nothing like that, it's a totally different kind of project, but what we saw then in terms of what kind of jewel it could be for the community, I see here. In terms of education, you've heard about our programming, it's been a hit and a half. So between the education, the recreation, the history that we can bring back to this place and connect everyone in this community, and, and have that sort of location is something we can all be proud of. So again, thank you so much for a few minutes to, to let us vent and let us express our excitement over our project. We hope you're just as excited. I know Bill has been a key helper and with Mark in seeing this done, so thank you so much for your time, and good luck to you. It's not an easy job you all have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions?
I just want to make a comment if I could. I was here back in 2022 when we signed the stewardship agreement. You know, and our concerns were twofold. One is that you did actually follow through with all the programming that you were anticipating, and you did. I'm very happy about that. I'm really impressed with what you did the past year, so I thank you for that. And the other concern we had was whether you could actually meet the goals financially, because it was a small local group at the time, so I want to thank Kevin for coming, and, and you've done such an impressive job. These are beautiful, and I wish you all the best moving forward. Certainly will support anything that you want us to get done.
Thank you.
Did you want to show any of the other boards behind you?
This one is a, is a special one. It's the, the way it is inside right now, and it's just hard to see it, but that roof structure is this roof structure, so we're not going to lose that. The way the architects worked it out is so that the skip sheathing that's supporting the shingles will be insulated on the outside, so we can have the feel of the barn that it was. It's, so it's, it's going to be great. This drawing here is a site plan that's actually part of the stewardship agreement, which does show the, the building, the layout, boat building, the gallery, museum, classrooms, office, and a little steward's apartment upstairs. So that all worked out, we think it worked out wonderfully, which probably, that apartment is probably going to make it a lot easier to hire an executive director. So thank you for allowing, you and your predecessors for allowing that, but it's very important to us, and, and just in, in closing this, are there questions? I've been up in this room quite a lot over the last fifty years, and on this project, there's been not one bit of pushback. It's all been support, and we're grateful.
It's a good project, and I actually went to the Hubbard, Tupper history.
Yeah.
That was quite interesting. They did a really good job on that.
Just for me, it's a sense of nostalgia. The house directly across the street is where my parents moved to when I was born, so I spent the first several years of my life looking at this building, and actually my older brothers at one point tried to put life preservers on the wheels of a big wheel and float me across North Sea Harbor, so. I was glad there were people in that building at a restaurant at the time that saw me floating across, so it's a, it's a beautiful building. It really is, and I'm glad to see it being restored.
Mark, I just want to say, first and foremost, thank you to the, the board members, and I do want to say that you're also, many of you, Connie, including your members of the North Sea CAC, and I just want to say that your advocacy through with the CAC is, is very much appreciated. You do a wonderful job advocating for the community in the Hamlet of North Sea, and I do want to also mention that this particular project in itself is really going to help emphasize the uniqueness of, of North Sea, North Sea's identity, which is, I think, is such a crucial part, and the town should be invested in trying to find ways we can really find all the different unique spots throughout the town, and this is great, so great, great work.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming today. It's wonderful to get to meet you, and thanks for all your good work, and renderings are beautiful.
Great.
Thanks for the feedback.
Thank you.
Keep on, see you everyone around town.
All right, well, our next, we're a little ahead of schedule. I think they'll gather their things to go.
Take care.
Bye. Thank you. Jackie just left.
Dan's here. Next, Dan, the star.
Dan, do you know if everyone's here for the next topic on the Poxabog?
Yo, can I check outside?
Yeah, please.
Would you like me to come up? We are waiting for the member from POT. I didn't see them out the hallway.
Well, we are a little bit early.
I'd also contact them.
Yeah, why don't you give them a call?
We have a full-on.
I'll give them a quick call.
Unless we have Janice come up.
Thanks.
Yep.
Certainly. My fault.
You can do this.
Yeah, she's ready. I don't know how long that's going to take. Let's see if they, they should be here any minute. Yeah, we should have time.
They did apply, they're, they're sending the submission.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have a seat in the audience for a minute, please.
Do you have the update from the youth bureau, if you wanted to take up some airtime on that? The letter from the youth bureau about what they've done this past summer?
You can do it.
I don't know where to build though, I think everybody's here now. Here he is. Okay, all right, good. Okay, our next topic is with respect to the proposed farm management plan at Poxabog Field. Jackie Fenlin is here, our CPF director, Dan McCormick attorney, and representatives from the Pecanic Land Trust. Come on up.
Morning, Dan.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning. So I just wanted to just, you know, give a little background on what we were working on so that the board is aware, but I did take this over from Lisa Combrink, and there was an authorization that I believe the town board worked on in December of twenty-two, so it was before some of you were on the board.
Thanks for the water.
And then I do have the authorizing resolution, so. And then I do have the authorizing resolution, so the authorizing resolution.
Give us the background.
Yeah, so the authorizing resolution was from August twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty. So this was kind of in the height of COVID. It was like a closing COVID. But Jerry, Bauer, and Forest Park LLC were the owners of the eight-point-three acres, which were four residential lots. So essentially, the town saved these four lots from being developed into residential homes. So there is a subdivision as well. Let me see, I think I have it here. But there was a subdivision that was done by Everett Foster, and I believe it's in nineteen eighty-seven. But just so you guys can see, that there was a configuration of the four lots with a drainage easement and a scenic easement. So even in nineteen eighty-seven, when they carved up the subdivision, they kind of understood the importance of seeing Poxabog Pond. And Poxabog Pond is just, let's see here, I'm orienting myself. It's just off of Poxabog Lane. So I don't know if you can see right here, but this is kind of like the edge of where Poxabog Pond is. So that's open water with some homes and residences around it. And then this is where the subject site is. So the subject site is surrounded on three sides by roads. The northern portion, as you can see it today, is still wooded. So we wouldn't be farming that, although we did purchase the property under the agricultural target area because it was being farmed historically. So this was, and in two thousand and twenty, it's referenced as the farmland preservation target area. Lots one and three on the subdivision map were also noted as trail priorities for the ocean, Beta Ocean Trail. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
Jackie, can you illustrate that on the map, where the trail?
Which is interesting. So on this map, one and three are actually these lots. So it's almost like they wanted the trail to go, you know, they're envisioning it going over the property. But just, I wanted everyone to be aware that, you know.
So the potential trail.
There could be a potential trail.
Connection.
Connection.
So if we were, how would that work out if we were to farm it?
So that kind of leads to the discussion, which we've been working with Peconic Land Trust since two thousand and twenty-two, to try to make sure that we fully understood what they wanted to do on the property. They have been always talking about doing sustainable farming practices. We did review the drainage easement and the scenic easement because those.
Sorry, with an existing trail?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so.
Sustainable, what did you call it?
Sustain, well, they want to do sustainable farming practices. But I think the true terminology, which I'll let Josh get into from Peconic Land Trust, is regenerative farming. So I have to admit, I'm not an expert on that, but it's basically taking into account the soil and the location of the property and having more sustainable, long-term farming approaches and soil management. But this is a very basic rendering that we have been reviewing. So we were looking at where we would put the agricultural fence. But Dan and I also reviewed the scenic easement because the scenic easement was not extinguished when we purchased the property. So it still lies on the land. So we wanted to make sure that we were cognizant of that and we read through. But basically, that means that we're not going to be looking at any high plantings on that area, which is basically along Poxabog Lane over here. We would hold true to that. And, you know, most farming doesn't really block the view.
But right now, you can see from the other road, you can see directly down to Pox, Pox. So you would lose that view shed from that road.
No. No, I don't think you would lose the view shed if it was farmed. But this is on the west, this is on the east, west side, sorry. So the west side has the scenic easement. And so I'm just trying to say that there was always an intent to preserve that view shed to Poxabog Pond. If this were to be like nursery stock, you know, tree plantings, yes, that could definitely, you know, and that's bona fide farming. So that could block it. But so working with Peconic Land Trust, we were just interpreting the drainage easement and the scenic easement to make sure like we honored the, you know, intent of that original subdivision and scenic easement. So the scenic easement basically runs along here. So in talking about that, we kind of said, well, you know, that probably is a better area to have low native plantings. It's so close to Poxabog Pond anyways. So maybe we can kind of essentially teach people about planting native species, pollinators, and possibly working a trail through that segment of it where people could kind of be educated, but also be admiring some of the native vegetation that you could plant on your own property. But it was intending, yeah, and it was intending that this would still be cultivated here. So I'll, I'll let Josh, I just wanted to give a little backstory because there was the nineteen eighty-seven subdivision, and we were reviewing that over the last couple of years. Just because the drainage easement doesn't really affect anything, we're not going to, you know, be impeding any drainage that may run across the property. But the scenic easement had some very specific wording that we looked at, and Dan reviewed as well.
Before we hand it over to Mr. Halsey, can we just briefly discuss that scenic easement a little bit more in depth? Like, what are some of the key terms in that, in that agreement?
It's basically the height of any vegetation. But again, it's intended for when it was going to be residentially developed. So we were just kind of like, how does that fit into the farming, you know, practices that will happen?
Does it?
Yeah, yeah, it's basically the farming or any plantings would just have to be kept lower in that location.
So it's less than four feet. So it does not have to be food farming?
No, this one is not purchased, doesn't enhance. This is just straight development rights.
Do you have a copy of the scenic easement?
You know, I believe I do. Actually, sorry, I don't have it in this file.
Wasn't the original?
I can email it to you, though.
It's kind of regenerative farming in this property?
Yeah, it's all regenerative.
Can you do that with landscape farming, like the trees and that?
I don't believe nursery would be involved in that. That's a lot of removing of the soil, and the intent with regenerative agriculture is to bring back the soil.
Why don't you tell us what it is? Because we're not all that educated on it.
And Michael, I can send you all the scenic easement, just so you know, it's very poor legibility. It's just a very old copy, so it was also very hard to read. But I'll send it to you guys. I have it.
I can pass them if you want.
Yeah, so in this bundle here, I have the latest version of the concept design, the aerial. Also, a brief introduction to regenerative agriculture as per the Rodale Institute. Also, a whole bunch of links that I'm happy to share later on. That goes into more detail about the practices themselves. But the main focus with regenerative agriculture is to focus on the soil. And the healthy soil element, as you can see, it's, it's really looking at the whole system. So there's less tillage in regenerative agriculture. There's a lot of the cover crop planting. And the real intent is to bring back as much of the benefits of healthy soil.
How do you do that? I mean, talk to us like we don't know anything about regenerative.
So you basically keep everything growing in the field throughout the season. So if you don't have crops that you're eating, you're putting a cover crop, like a pea or, you know, a mix of rye, what it used to be over there for a long time. And that stabilizes the soil, it also increases the organic matter. You would keep all the material on site instead of bringing it somewhere else to really add to the ecosystem.
So it's basically a natural way of regenerating and bringing the soil quality back up. So before, we had fertilizers, you know, that you would purchase. It's kind of like the old practice of making sure you're kind of re-tilling and rotating crops, you know, so that the soil is basically healthy and storing it to its full potential.
But the tilling is the issue, though, right?
Yes.
What's something I've learned recently?
Yeah, it's, it's the routine tillage because you expose the soil to the air. And when it's snowing as well, the water can collect and it can be pulled off that way, too. So you're really adding to the system.
Is there a level of disturbance of some of the natural, you know, ecosystems there because you are aiming for regenerative growth? Are you taking out old soil, potentially disrupting existing ecosystems?
It would actually be the contrary because there would be a net positive, there'd be more soil. Currently, it's fallow, and there's a lot of.
Can you explain that? How is that the case? Because there's more soil.
So if you're, you're growing the plant, then you cut the plant. You're keeping that carbon in the soil. But if you let it sit there, you get more shrubby plants that gradually will colonize the area, and you'll have succession. You won't have as much carbon sequestration that way. It's a gradual process, as it is going right now, because it hasn't been mowed in a couple of years, at least four.
When was the last time it was farmed?
Last time it was farmed, I do have, I believe, this is a memo from two thousand and twenty-one. Roughly, when was the closing? It was.
I was just asking when the deed was reported.
It says I have a thing here. It says Tom Folkowski last farmed the field in two thousand and sixteen.
It would have been prior to CPF purchase of it was the last time it was farmed.
Which it was straw or some sort of rye.
He said he was planting corn.
Yeah, we, we purchased it on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. It's the reporting of the deed.
It hasn't been farmed for the last four years. There's no one interested in farming it, or?
Well, so we have a draft stewardship agreement that was authorized by the town board in two thousand and twenty-two. We are working with them. I shared that with them.
Them?
The Peconic Land Trust in two thousand and twenty-two, just, you know, because it was something I had just been made aware of essentially. And we were looking at what features are needed for the farm to be, continue to be farmed. So one of my first assignments was just looking at, like, where would it be appropriate to put the agricultural fence? You know, if they would like to situate a well, where is the appropriate area for situating the well? And then we kind of got into the, you know, regenerative farming approach. And, you know, we were about to essentially put out a bid for the agricultural fence. But before we did that, we wanted to make sure we looked very closely at the scenic easement and drainage easement and how that basically impacts the property and impacts basically the farm and management plan. So we kind of have a draft stewardship agreement. Nothing was ever signed. It was authorized to be signed by the town board. But we were kind of working on the details of what's the best farming concept plan for the site is where we left off. And then obviously, we did receive letters from many environmental advocates in the fall and also in the spring and early summer of this year, so fall of twenty-four. We got a letter inquiring about keeping it in its native state. And, you know, so I know that the board, I just wanted you to be aware of what we've been working on for the last couple of years.
So we bought it in two thousand and twenty-two.
We bought it in two thousand and twenty-one.
Two thousand and twenty-one.
The stewardship agreement was authorized in two thousand and twenty-two. Peconic Land Trust representatives weren't aware that that had been authorized by the town board. But then I kind of brought it up, and as I was taking over, you know, kind of taking over some responsibility for this project, we were meeting with them in twenty-three and twenty-four.
How much has the Long Pond Green Belt folks been included in these conversations? Given that there's a, I think, certainly a continuity of, environmental continuity here.
So I update them at their.
Originally speaking.
Yeah, I update them at their, some of their monthly meetings, and this does come up from time to time. I did tell them that we were working on a farming management plan with Peconic Land Trust. I mean, essentially, we were at the stage where we had multiple meetings and Zooms with Peconic Land Trust, trying to refine what the farm management practices would be and where the best situation of the fence was. But essentially, the concept was leave the west alone where the scenic easement is. Have that be more native, perennial, and educational, possibly allowing for a trail in that location, which would be not in conflict with active till. So that would be along Poxabog Lane. It would be right here.
Yeah, and there's a buffer area that we included here. It came out a little weird in the printing, but. It looks like a pond.
Yeah.
It's close to the pond, but.
Might be a low spot.
That's the only part you're trying to preserve?
Yeah.
I mean, for farming?
Oh, no, that would be the part for native plantings and to leave it alone. Farming would be in that section.
Do you have to put a fence up?
In talking to Peconic Land Trust, they basically said the best practice would be to put a fence up.
It's crop farming, you're giving the opposite.
Yeah, it's the only viable way to, to get a farmer there. It's the only way that it would economically make sense.
And I have to admit, there were some complicating factors, even when I was meeting with fence companies in the summer and fall of two thousand and twenty-two, because Sag Road actually sits a little higher than the till field. So it's also, you know, we were kind of trying to work with the fence companies at that point to say, where is it a best part? You know, because basically, the road is a little higher, and then it almost has like an earthen berm, and then it's like a tilled land, you know? So we wanted to make sure we situated the fence, you know, we don't want to put it like low. We were considering paying defenses, which was something that Lisa Combrink had mentioned early on.
I would not support that.
But again, you know, this was.
But what is the original resolution? What was the intent back in two thousand and twenty-one when we bought it?
It was agriculture.
But I mean, is that written somewhere that it's?
Well, it's in the resolution.
But I mean, like, this division part to allow for some natural growth and some regenerative.
That actually came later on when we were reviewing the actual terms of the subdivision and the easements that we received. So in keeping with easements and with Dan's review, it's essentially that one scenic area would have to be kept low. So it still could be farmed, but we thought, what better way than to have kind of like perennial native garden on the west? Also, making sure that water doesn't drain into Poxabog Pond.
So just so I'm, I'm correct and clear on this. So this is what is being farmed, this large swath?
Yeah.
And this is what is being preserved, this small piece?
That's what was proposed.
So given the exper, well, I wouldn't, I don't know, regenerative farming is probably not considered experimental, is it? I mean, is that?
It's as old as time.
It's not, right? It's, yeah, it's, would you, would you say that, you know, you should try to figure out ways to maybe make the regenerative farming piece a little bit, you know, smaller than the current?
Yeah, we could. I mean, again, these are just very preliminary concept plans as we are working through the overall management.
But how do you preserve the view shed if, you know, are you going to limit what can be planted? In writing?
We were gonna, yeah, we were gonna look at, so I don't think they got to the planting stage yet, you know, where they were looking at native plants. But we were gonna essentially request them to keep them to be low.
Is this in, is this in the village?
This is in the village of Sagaponix.
And what does the village want?
The village has just recently written correspondence that they would like to see it remain in farming, active agriculture. We just got a resolution actually passed.
From them?
By the town, yeah, by the village of Sagaponix.
I, I, you know, for myself, I have been a champion of farming. I have, especially on the past board, really worked on trying to get farmers the value for their land and have them come to the town with farmland because that was a real problem for the past several years. And I have to say, I was fully on board with this until Dave Dayton actually took me for a ride. And pulling up in front of this meadow on Sag Road was just like, the view was just, why would you destroy this? Why would you put up, you know, an eight-foot fence? Why would we pay to put up an eight-foot fence? And I don't know, it hasn't been farmed since two thousand and sixteen. The farmer who last farmed it said it wasn't great for farming at that time. That I get it, that was without a fence, but there's so many farm fields that are fenced off in Sagaponix because quite honestly, that is the only way you can farm with the deer population the way it is. And there is a lot of pressure on the deer, and this allows them, you know, an untouched meadow for a place to basically go. And I don't, I just, you know, there's so few places like this left. And to hear that we're going to fence it off, but then we're going to plant natives and do like a bio swell for the pond, when this entire property is currently, has reverted to a natural bio swell of sorts. I mean, it's capturing everything from the vineyard and, you know, I mean, I don't know what they're putting on their fields, but it's all coming and filtering down to this pond. And this is, this giant natural, I mean, there's, there's meadow grasses, there's birds, there's. This has become over the past, since two thousand and sixteen, for the past nine years, this has reverted back to like a natural ecosystem. And, and to say that now we're gonna do, we're gonna revert it back to better farmland, I would rather preserve a piece of farmland that's actively being farmed and, you know.
Is that accurate to say? I thought you said it hadn't been farmed since we bought it in twenty-one. It hasn't been farmed since two thousand and sixteen?
Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with how.
We had a statement from the fire, from the former, from the former farmer. The last person that farmed it said they last farmed it in two thousand and sixteen.
Who was the last farmer?
Tom Folkowski.
So the town already preserved this property for farming. So we have to also consider the precedent by changing it because that does have repercussions.
So, and that's also why the board asked to have a public hearing on that, so that public hearing to consider that change is required by town code, so that will be on September 9th.
That's what the people say. I mean, that's really what it comes down to, what is, what was the residents' want?
This is a disturbed site as well. It's just, as you mentioned with the road, the way it is, it's higher in elevation, the runoff does go into the pond, but the groundwater actually flows towards Sag Pond.
So here's the other thing, though, we preserve this for farming, but we didn't preserve this for farming, saying that we would put in fencing, ag fencing, we didn't preserve this for farming, saying we would put in a well. I mean, those are all above and beyond now, I mean, that's not, if I'm saying if it's gonna be farmland and you can farm it the way it is, as it sits, go ahead, obviously, nobody has come forward to do that, because it's not a viable piece the way it sits, right? It needs water, it needs fencing in order for it to be viable farmland, so we're changing the, I mean, I would like to hear from the community, like, okay, we preserve this for farming, but we're gonna fence it, we're gonna put an eight-foot fence around this piece of property, and from SAG road, you're gonna see an eight-foot deer fence. So I'd like to hear what they have to say about it, I mean, that's gonna weigh in heavily on what I decide to do.
Yeah, and just in working with, you know, farmers and, you know, also, I feel like PLT had a consulting farmer, you know, the best way to make sure you retain farming crops is to fence it, we all know there's a high deer population out here. And then when I took it over from the previous manager, Lisa Combrink, the well was to be paid for by Pecanic Land Trust, based upon, you know, where they thought it was best suited for their agricultural practices. We did not put this out to bid, the other thing was, you know, if we weren't gearing up towards a license agreement with Pecanic Land Trust, we could have put that out to bid to the public. We currently have a bid out right now on 93 Butter Lane, which is another property that is bought for agricultural purposes, and we got three responses.
For what?
An agricultural farming bid, so we lease any farmland that the town owns, we do lease it out to farmers for active cultivation.
So we just haven't actively marketed this?
We haven't actively marketed this one, but I think, because the intention was, I think, we, you know, and I can't speak for Lisa, but it seems that Pecanic Land Trust was reached out to after we purchased the property to have the license agreement, so they could steward the property and then do sustainable farming practices here.
So would they lease it out to a farmer to farm it, or is PLT undertaking to do?
We have a leasing program, and we have the network of farmers, we just, we've been at a standstill for years because the infrastructure isn't in place. There do exist grants that the town could apply for, cover the cost of infrastructure.
We did have, I mean, the only, the only request that has come across my desk from a farmer for this piece is Wolfher, they want to plant grapes there.
Yeah, we did, we did receive correspondence, and I did speak with them on the phone, Wolfher was interested in this, but I just told them, you know, you can attend the public hearing that we're scheduling on September 9th.
I mean, we're gonna fence in a farm for Wolfher to grow grapes?
Well, that would be if we put it out to a public bid, right now, what we were working on was a license agreement.
But is that a potential? Could that potentially happen?
If we don't enter into stewardship and license agreement with PLT, who has a leasing program?
What was the impetus for PLT to get involved in this? I mean, I know you went a little bit over the legislative history, but what was the, what was the motivation for PLT to do regenerative farming at this?
Well, Pecanic Land Trust is always in a position to resolve, and there was a lot of discussion at the time about preservation of this parcel, which it was preserved with a specific intent at the time. And since we are also doing studies on Poxabog Pond and Sag Pond, it all seemed to be a confluence of our work. You know, it's a place where we now have a more fuller understanding that the groundwater flows into Sag Pond. For instance, we're thinking we could have a shallow well, actually pump nitrogen out and use it on the, on the field there. So essentially, taking nitrogen out of Poxabog before it gets to Sag Pond and use that as a demonstration for regenerative agriculture, which is-
Yeah, can you tell us more about this demonstration type of feature that you're discussing?
Yeah, so with any agricultural system, it's good to have a buffer for the runoff. So we would have signage, like we have on a number of our preserves, that illustrates the importance of the pollinators, another, a series of trails along Poxabog, so there's ways to connect that in. And hearing now that there is a trail element diagonally, there could be a way to connect that if the fence were further from the property boundary. So there's, yeah, all sorts of ways to demonstrate the practices. Of course, the details on the agricultural piece would have to be worked out in the lease agreement with the farmer, for safety reasons as well.
But you were saying of taking the nitrogen out of the pond and using that to irrigate the farmland, how would that work? Any thoughts on that?
We haven't gone into the specifications of that yet, but we do have, I'm happy to send this around, the latest report from Molly Graffman at Cornell Crop Extension, where she indicates that the quantity of nitrogen, let's see where it is. Any nutrients introduced to the groundwater via agricultural demonstration would likely be transported southward, mixing with nitrogen-rich groundwater already present. So if we were to bypass it, we could prevent it from getting to Sag Pond, at least some of it.
So essentially, Poxabog Pond is like to the northwest of this property, and Sag Pond is to the southeast. So through the CPF Water Quality Grant, they did a groundwater study on Poxabog Pond to see what is contributing to the nitrogen in Poxabog Pond and which way the groundwater is flowing. So that study just concluded, I read through it, I think, either early this year, like in the fall of last year. So basically, we now know that the main source of nitrogen for Poxabog Pond is mainly sanitary systems and legacy nitrogen. But what Josh is kind of alluding is that the pond right here, that groundwater flow is actually flowing southeast towards the watershed of Sag Pond. There is the potential, because of shallow groundwater, that they could put the well in there, and the well wouldn't have to be deep, and essentially, you'd be essentially taking that well water, that natural groundwater that does have some nitrogen in it, and repurposing it for-
The middle form there.
I have a question.
Yep.
So, once it's fenced in, what's this acreage, square footage, when it's sort of fenced in, and if it's, what's the feasible of what you can plant there for a farmer to make it worthwhile for him to go on there on a small piece?
So just looking at this, it'd probably be about six acres fenced in, maybe a little less.
Too much.
And it will, it will be a candidate that, it wouldn't be their sole source of income, it would be a subset of their operation.
I just want to make sure if you go, you know, you spend the money, put the well in the fence, is it feasible for someone, will Tom come back and farm it, or will another farmer come in, you know? You don't want to ruin a good piece of property for a scenic if it's not feasible to be farmed.
And that's something that would come out of the RFP process as well. If it were to go out to bid, we could include that.
You should, that should be, you know, done before, because you don't want to waste all your time and energy if it's not feasible to be farmed.
So your concern, Bill, is do you know of any farmers that are currently interested that PLT works with?
Yeah.
Yeah, what are they going to grow? So I was here when we preserved this originally, there was a big urgency to take, you know, make sure that we preserve farmland at the time. Since then, we've done a tremendous job of preserving farmland all across our town. This piece, now after at least four years of us owning it, and maybe 10 years of not being farmed, is in a state where we would generally look at it and say this needs to be preserved for open space, not for farming. So my opinion is that ship has sailed for farming, so it honestly needs, at least to be preserved, more than half of what's here. We're gonna, we're not gonna be able to farm six acres on this. I just think it's overgrown, it's back to nature, it needs to be kept the way it is. I mean, we've had an agreement for how many years now, and nothing's been done. I don't understand how four years go by, and now we're looking at this again.
That's a good point, Rick, and I do want to say that there have been numerous letters from a lot of environmental groups citing concern over the native grassland species, endangered species, tree swallows, red-tailed hawks, eastern screech owls, and the list goes on and on, just the concern of, you know, if we are to do this, how does some of the changes made to the property through the regenerative farming, including the fencing, how does that all affect the natural ecosystems? I think that's something for us to consider.
Isn't the native growth now so taken over that it is impacting the view shed of the ponds?
No, not right now, it is, I mean, it is olive trees to the north, I mean, those will slowly succeed. I have to admit, if you want to keep the vista but not farm it, we're going to have to mow it, we're gonna have to mow this.
All right, so that's another thing.
So currently, we haven't mowed it, because we've been kind of like waiting on the fencing plan and seeing, you know, where the appropriate site is for the well and the fencing. But it will still have to be mowed, you know, to maintain a field that will not be successional growth, we'll have to mow it usually in November and late, late February to, you know, in that range.
So all this growth that's there that everybody's admiring is gonna get mowed?
It will be, it will be mowed, and it will have to come back, you know, seasonally, you know.
We'll get a couple goats.
That's how a meadow works. I mean, and we do have a group, I know, that is raring to go, ready to go in and remove the invasives and potentially mow it, so.
Yeah, but to ensure that it doesn't become woody vegetation, and to ensure the, you know, the vista and the meadow ecosystem, we would still have to disturb the area with, you know, either annual or biannual mowing, just so the board is aware. Because otherwise, it will be reclaimed naturally by nature. But obviously, the vista, the scenic vista is very important, you know, and, you know, it speaks to the fact that even in 1987, when this was being planned for four homes, this was viewed as, you know, they want to keep that view shed along Poxabog Lane. And there's, you know, it's a beautiful piece of property. It's not the most, you know, it's not the most highly valued soil in the world, but it was historically farmed, you know, for hundreds of years before, you know, it was purchased. So the good thing here, right, is that we have the ability to see what is right for this property now. It was purchased for agriculture, that was the way we were going, so you now have a public hearing before you, so that you can take everything into consideration, but we have been working behind the scenes, and I have to admit, you know, a lot of work went into it, but we're not gonna put more work into this farming management plan if the board wants to go in another direction. So that's why we just wanted to present to you today, so you understood the concept that we were looking at.
Very much appreciate it, Jackie.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't, I haven't made up my mind, I definitely want to hear what people have to say on Tuesday, especially given the fencing issue aspect of it, you know, and I have a call-in from a local farmer who I admire greatly, asked to speak to me about this, so we'll see what he says and-
The fencing could get put in, it doesn't have to be right on the edge of the property, right, so it would be covered by growth?
Absolutely, we could modify the fencing plan.
It's true, the smaller you make the farm field, the less likely you are to get a farmer who can make money and-
You make it feasible to go over there, that's what I'm worried about.
When you have, when you have a- Yeah, so this will probably be about six acres, and to tell you the truth, I just did a very rough estimate while you guys were talking, so the non-scenic easement area, if we were gonna, is about 5.5, you know, but we don't have to follow the scenic easement, but we just understand that that scenic easement is, you know, we are gonna comply by that no matter what happens, right? So no matter what, we'll have to mow it, or whatever is farmed there and cultivated there would have to be, yeah. Yeah, so the outside of the scenic easement is 5.5 acres. We just would have to comply with that scenic easement to retain that vista, but the intent is to retain.
That's not something we can change with our public hearing.
No, no, and that still remains in effect.
Reminds you what to learn.
Do you find the scenic easement in the title report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, thanks for coming, we'll read what you handed out.
Happy to send the links too. It's hard to follow a link on paper, right?
It's an age of meters for that.
Digital fingers. Yeah, so thank you.
All right, so we'll see you at the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie and Dan.
See you later tonight.
All right, our next topic is mixed-use zoning, floating zone. Janice Shear is here, and Teresa Mason is with us also. Teresa, oh, you're gonna sit at the computer? Another PowerPoint for you.
Always have great PowerPoints.
Oh, thanks, they're just to help guide the conversation.
Good morning.
Penguins.
Or just go to slideshow on the top, top? Yep, oh, yeah, perfect, so.
Ready?
Oh, yes. So I want to make sure, so good morning, for the record, I'm Janice Shear, Town Planning and Development Administrator, I'm joined by Teresa Mason, Principal Planner, with me in long-range planning, and today, we're gonna talk about mixed-use zoning as a topic of a floating zone that we've been talking about for various, another tool in your toolbox for different things you want to achieve in the town. So we don't have a category called mixed-use zoning per se, we have a zoning designation right now called VB, Village Business, and so we're gonna talk about what's the difference. So what is mixed-use zoning? And this is, you know, basically based on the fact that a great downtown is filled with a mix of uses, different varying uses that come together. We have one right here, Southampton Village, Sag Harbor, you think of the places that we love, those are mixed uses, they have retail, they have residential, they have commercial activity, they have a place to go and recreate and see people and be seen and have a social interaction, and kids to go somewhere after school, so downtowns are places that we know and love, and I don't need to really-
Economic drivers.
And economic drivers. So we have Southampton, as, and I just mentioned, oldest English settlement in New York State, although South Hold Mesa, object to that, but we like to say that we are, and really, if you tried to recreate what's in Southampton Village today, you wouldn't be able to under VB zoning, and we've talked about this over the years, that it doesn't even lend itself to creating a true downtown, the way we know and love them from, you know, the past. So again, mixed-use zoning here in this context is a planning tool, and it's to continue this tradition of creating these vibrant downtowns that are healthy and cherished by locals, and over time, you know, vibrant downtowns, and, you know, when you look at the literature and things that people say, there's, you know, the peaceful, organized, balanced functioning of civil society is found in its city center, or downtown, or square, or anything like that, from the oldest of times until now, 2025, this is still true. So the benefits, of course, are to create these walkable communities, reducing traffic and car dependency, they reduce greenhouse gas emissions, there's a sustainable live-work potential, where people can live where they work, resulting in reduced transportation costs, healthier lifestyle, so walking, much more walkability, social interaction, creating a special place, you know, oh, we're just gonna meet for a drink downtown, we're gonna go here downtown after the wedding, we're gonna meet, you know, whatever it is, people go to their downtown. Me, I grew up in Porchev Station, down port was our place to go and be, and it, you know, and if you want to have a reunion with anybody to this day, we say, let's go downtown, or West Hampton Beach, or anywhere like that.
And also conducive to public transportation?
Exactly. Places that have train transport, or anywhere, anyone who has ever traveled anywhere on earth knows that you get somewhere and you look for their main street, you look for the center of activity, you look for where you're going, in any state in this country, or even in Europe, you know, which is- or even in Europe, you know, which is better at this than not, we are, but, you know, that's where it comes from. So that is mixed use. That is what we're talking about. And then we want to reflect the community-driven design standards, you know, and of a historic district. You know, you've seen pattern books. We've talked about form-based code. All of these things are trying to say, what is it? Do you wanna see here? And how do we achieve that? And then where would we apply mixed-use zoning? So we looked at it and said, you know, we have VB, which is our mixed use, but the problem is our current VB, which you could say, well, Janice, why don't we just change VB? All the things in VB, and we could. Or you can create, you don't know that you, you know, you can create an overlay for someone to avail themselves of that tool and make an application to you for something they want to do versus presuppose everything that someone wants to do, you know, you don't know the future. So you have this as a tool, just like you have all the other ones, which we've been talking about. A hotel mixed use, so, you know, I'm sorry, a hotel overlay or a, you know, any of the other. Exactly, affordable, any ones that you don't know, but you can pull it down when you're ready to, you or a future board. So the, again, it would, this mixed-use zoning would be applied. We're saying applicable in a VB, so it's almost an overlay in a commercial district already. And that gives someone the ability to make a proposal to you versus being hemmed in by VB, which is very stringent in its requirements. But it will remain VB until someone wants to do something, right?
But VB allows for mixed use to a certain extent already with shops on the main floor and apartments above, right? So what does this add to that?
It adds the ability to aggregate parcels in a VB and provide for a larger development pattern, you know, so.
More cohesive.
Yeah, so like a master plan in a VB. That would be the, that would be what I would characterize it as.
And you have to remember, under current VB standards, they just go to the planning board, right? And the planning board can say, okay, this, that, and the other thing. But here, when you have a lar, you could have a larger, more cohesive development and you guys would, as the, as the electeds, have an opportunity to weigh in on, on the direction that kind of needs to go. And then obviously, the planning board will get into the nitty-gritties of that. But as, as the elected buy, you can say, okay, we want a more cohesive development through this.
So we've been talking a lot about the Hampton Bays proposal, but that's not just this. It could be in any VB. And in that case, he has no path because, in Hampton Bays, I don't wanna make this all about Hampton Bays, but we know that that was one of the things here that we've been talking about. And there's no, so create a way for someone to pitch a proposal to you. We're not writing the code for anyone. We're just saying, here's a code that's, that provides for a pathway and someone can make their pitch and you could say, we're gonna consider this, we're not gonna consider it, whatever it is.
But couldn't they go in and do, you know, mixed use right now?
Yes, but what we're saying is it's not economically viable. VB allows like one apartment for every twelve hundred and fifty square feet, like it's not enough. So if you wanna change the VB standards, that's also an option. That's why we're not coming to you with a full-blown code right this minute, because I wanna make sure what you wanna do here, but that is also an option.
So in other words, that if I wanna come in and I wanna build a newer apartment with stores, like instead of six apartments, I can ask for eight apartments?
Yes. You can ask for what you are proposing, but obviously, there's gotta be standards under that ask. And they're not asking the planning board, as Teresa was just saying, they're asking you.
What, if something's not allowed in the, in the plan? And say, I wanna put a cemetery in the middle of the district, cause.
Well, that wouldn't be mixed use, right?
No, but, but then, then they can say, come to the board and say, no.
Well, that would be, you would have a list of uses that you could.
I just wanna make sure that we have a list of uses.
You would have a list of uses. And those uses would include the same things you see now, retail, office, jewelry shop, bakery.
I mean, as it was described previously, it's like a secondary set of different criteria that would have to be met. Like, we established the, the overlay itself is a secondary set of, of what would be qualified within that.
Right, and it's not there until you place it there, until someone makes an application to you. You like what you see. You set it up how you want it, you know, through the public participation process, and then you land it. So that's what we're suggesting here.
Also, keep in mind, with the VB zones currently proposed, the planning board has to make sure it meets everything. So all the parking has to be provided on-site. All of this has to be, all of the amenities have to be provided on-site. Whereas if you have a, an aggregation of properties, let's say I have three properties and I come in and ask for this, I'm gonna propose an office here and a restaurant here and, and my development is got on three lots, but I can now share, potentially share parking, because my parking at the restaurant is gonna be in the evenings and my office parking. Why do I need to have twenty parking spaces just dedicated for office and fifty parking spaces just dated?
But that's not to say that we're not gonna have enough parking. I just wanna make that clear. So yes, but the point is, it's a master plan. So when we first, just as a little tangent, when we first set out to zone Gabreski Airport, we wrote this whole code and like, if someone comes in, then this, then that, and all this stuff, right, this overlay. And then what, thank goodness, the county found a master developer, who was Reckler, to just do the whole thing and we zoned, and then they were able to do a master plan for the whole thing. And that made life so much easier. So in the VB, you're dealing with like little teeny buildings and trying to make them work out with a master plan. You know, if someone aggregated enough property, in our, our view, we would say at least five acres, then you can review a master plan. And that's what this is about. It's a, it's a master plan.
So we're basically trying to front-load a PDD?
It's not a PDD because a planned development district is an incentive zoning tool and you have elected to get rid of those.
So, so that's what I mean, though. Back in the day, this would just be a PDD with incentives for the community and.
If it was that, yes, that was a master planning tool.
But that didn't have secondary sets, it didn't have an assigned secondary set of criteria, though, the PDD.
It did, it had criteria, but the difference was that it was incentive-based. Meaning incentive zoning is another planning tool and that means that you are wanting a developer to, you, the community wants to achieve something. Let's say it's a new train station and they want the developer to pay for a new train station. So they're willing to give a developer certain things to allow that. These are things that happen in communities that aren't.
Right.
Well-endowed with a lot of tax revenue. So they need development to order to offset community goals, and that's incentive zoning. So that's what the PDD was all about. Here, that is not that, although it could be, but that.
We don't have that tool anymore.
You've got eliminated.
No, but that's what I mean. We don't have that tool anymore, so now we're doing these overlays.
When you're talking about a master plan, it's similar. Because that was a, was a way to say, we all know what's gonna happen up front. This is the plan. And then we understand what the trade-offs are. In this case, it's just, here's a master plan that someone wants to propose. They're not proposing it to the planning board. They're proposing it to you. Which in our last conversation about affordable housing, you said you wanted to be the entity to vet these things and be accountable to the public. So that's, that's why we created it as an overlay. If that makes sense.
So are you suggesting that an, a floating zone dropped like in a village business would be a minimum of five acres? Is that what you said?
We're recommending that, yes.
And could it be a lot larger than that?
It's a minimum of five. You could place maximums if that's what you wanna do.
And that would be a specific request, say, from a developer? You wouldn't put that zone where other landowners in, in town would be included in that?
No, we would say anyone in a VB zone is eligible, but you have to aggregate a certain amount of land and then you can apply. And other people can join forces together if they wanted to apply together, right? And so if we said a minimum of five acres, recently I said a minimum of two and you said that was not enough, so we said, okay, well, at least five here, right? So you wanna aggregate at least five acres to create a master plan, because you need parking, you need a.
But, so I think, I think, I think to Rick's point, like, I think what we're getting here is this, this person who has over five acres can get, avail themselves of these extra things that they can do on their property. But then the existing, is this where you're going with this? The existing business owners in VB couldn't avail themselves of those same features.
Yeah, it's not easy to accumulate five acres in a down, in a village business.
Right.
I mean, that's very, that's very.
You're saying you're gonna allow like more housing and you're saying that existing businesses in that downtown can't have, avail themselves of the same housing?
I'm not allowing anything. You are.
I know.
So I'm asking you, what do you want to do? And so each and every one of these things, systems is what you see. So if you say, we're gonna allow someone to apply for mixed use and then you say, here's the things they can do under that, and oh, by the way, I wanna amend VB to allow them to have this, you know, some equity here, fine, we have no, so it's not. I'm just trying to show you a system that we can work out and try to collaborate together to get there. So whatever it is you want to be in that code is what will be in that code. But we could just change the mixed use code.
And it's not to say that as Janice is a five acres, a five-acre lot owner and I as a two-acre lot owner, we could, lot owner, we could join forces and include it together.
But if you only have, only have, let's say, a quarter acre and you have a building already there and you're saying, well, he's, this person who aggregated five acres is getting this and I can only do that, that is now a function of what does VB allow and whether or not you're connected to a greater sanitary system.
So that's my follow-up question on that is, you know, are there limitations on what we would allow then? I mean, I mean, I know we can decide at the table, but are there written like limitations on?
So we would write a code of, you know, basically of what those limitations are. So, and it's all revolves around how much density you wanna confer, how much land area is required, how much parking, you know, usually that's the limiting factors, right?
How much infrastructure.
How much infrastructure you need.
But we need to understand also what VB allows now and the mixed-use zone zoning versus what's being proposed, you know, how much more is gonna be allowed under this floating zone?
I don't know that, yes, that's fine. We can do that, no problem. It, it's that when you say how much extra is going to be allowed, the point is to create a category so that someone can apply and make application to you. Whatever number I put in there, I'm guessing. I don't know their pro forma. I don't know what they wanna do. Isn't it easier to create a pathway that says, here's a mixed-use zone, you need at least as many acres?
It would still be an elect-to-consider situation.
Of course.
So we could then have that, or have that discussion with a specific plan as to what we do and don't want to allow.
Instead of guessing a plan that no one's even, and then having an uproar over a plan that's not even a plan. It's just a, this is just a category that someone can apply to you under, right? Make an application.
Because I mean, that's what I think a lot of people have been wanting, is let's just, let's see what's being proposed or what.
There's no path to propose anything right now. So if we don't create that path, then it will just be the status quo.
At the end of the day, we can still say no.
But there has to be in the code. I mean, wouldn't there be a maximum?
Yeah.
But what is that maximum? So that is going to be something we'll develop and it's an iterative process.
That's a tough number to come to because.
Because you don't know what someone's gonna propose, but you also don't wanna be arbitrary and say, or maybe you do, you know. I mean, there's a point where, in a discretionary world, it's at your discretion. In a planning board world, it's standard, do I meet the standard or not?
Right, but what is the standard in a long-term reasonable planning? We wouldn't know that.
Well, that part of that aspect with infrastructure.
You can back into it.
But we're having the sewer treatment plant going, so.
But we're gonna get there, because there's a way to know this by backing into these things, by understanding what goes into creating a good mixed-use zone.
Why we have planners.
So what is the ingredients for the successful downtown that you're trying to build? What do you need to know about this first? First of all, you need to understand streets, the parks, the public spaces. We need to have those in any good area, any center, any square, any place has to have a place to go. In the case of Hampton Bays, we know we have good ground park. That could have been all condominiums. It's not. It's, it's a thirty-eight acre park there. And then when we activated that park, the idea was to be able to now interact with that park and, and lead up to it, so we have that. But other spaces, other VB zones, we should want to define that. And we've been talking about that in Riverside a lot, the streets. Designing and laying down, understanding what would be necessary to even be there and interact with this space. That, that once you lay down streets, you get smaller. Once you say parking, it gets smaller, right? Like what results in the end. So you, you have to do those things first. And then you have to focus on the buildings, how the buildings attach to that street, right? Where are the entrances? How many are there? How much space is there between the entrances? What's happening on the ground floor? You know, this contributes to that environment. So you, you can back into that how much is enough number by first focusing on what the public realm is all about. And that's really our job as, you know, public-facing, not the private developer side, but the public side is, is the first step. Then, of course, and planning is all about walkability in a, in a downtown, you know, walking, human, scaled connection, having a place to walk to. You know, I was walking in Greenport with a group of people and it was like, where do you wanna go? Oh, what, let's walk over to the carousel. Let's walk over to the old jail. Let's walk over to the waterfront. You had a destination. And along the way, let's stop and get Italian ice. Let's get some lunch, right? So those, you have to have somewhere to get to i- if you're planning like a, a master downtown. Not just all about the car. Obviously, that's a big deal. I mean, everything since the advent of single occupancy vehicle is based about the car. But if we're getting back to our roots, like a village, then you want to really be able to walk around and not be worried that you're gonna get hurt. And design, like I said, the public spaces as they'll outlive the buildings. You know, buildings come and go. They have a lifespan. But the streets and the squares, they live forever because they're in the public domain. And then learn from the places that we cherish and build new ones that will be beautiful and loved. And that's the goal here. We're not trying to just cram in as much as someone's asking for. You're trying to collaborate and it's an iterative process to build the thing that you will go down in history as. That's your, like, you, you understood the challenge and you can do that. You know, additional benefits as usual are the economic investment, economic growth. You know, mix of uses creates diverse revenue streams. Local economy becomes more resilient. You have more opportunity for mom and pop to have a store, have a, have a business. Kids coming out of college have a place to live. And it can strike the balance between preservation and land use, more housing opportunities, and this all results in higher property values. Just wanna say that this mixed-use thing is not always urban. Like, everybody's like, oh, my God, this is, now you're building a city, which it's, it could look how you want it to feel and look, right? This is a mixed-use in Spian. This is VB, but the, but we had to do all these gymnastics to get to having apartments above that work, a three-thirty-dash-eight overlay on an MF forty-four. I mean, to get to just a simple coffee shop with an apartment above, we can do this much easier.
So that's already legal, though, in VB.
You did it, but it wasn't because it was more than it was allowed. So we had to do all the zoning that was required versus what I'm saying is.
But wasn't that a residential area?
It is a residential area.
Yeah, so that's why you've got, you know, apartments on the first floor, the second floor, the third.
No, this was zoned VB. It still is zoned VB. But we had to rezone MF forty-four, multifamily forty-four with three-thirty-dash-eight overlay, blah, blah, all this to get to that. What I'm suggesting to you is there's an easier way to get to that. It could have been a mixed-use category and you could have looked at a plan that showed this and said, sure. And it doesn't have to be.
But it wouldn't, still wouldn't have been five acres.
Right, so that's the other part of that. But the whole site is more than five acres, yes, because it's a transit-oriented development. This is just the front part, but it includes that rear part. The point I'm trying to make to you is you can get there more easily if you want to. If we had, you know, some code objectives, we were talking about, you know, the permitted uses, requirements for community betting, benefit housing, we would say, add those in because, you know, the minute you create downtown housing, like, people from the city or else, you know, want that. And then the prices go up and then you're not really helping the local people. So people say, oh, it's affordable housing and that's not good. But the truth is, the affordability component is necessary to retain your local workforce and all the things that affordable housing is meant to do. So we would advocate for creating a certain percentage. Here, we're at twenty-five percent. It could be whatever, right now, it's only twenty percent if you did a regular MF forty-four, let's say. But you don't have anything for a village zoning. You don't restrict any affordable housing in that case. So in the mixed-use, you could say, well, twenty-five percent of whatever you're proposing is gonna stay under our program. Require cross-access, shared parking, as Teresa was touching on before, bicycle parking, civic and open space, sustainable design, solar-ready, you know, buildings, pedestrian scale and variety. So, and these are our village business areas in the town. So you have what I was just talking about, which was Spian, Riverside, which we're working on. Flanders has a VB, East Quogue has a VB. Flanders has a VB, East Quogue has a VB. Hampton Bays, as we know, we've been talking about that for a long time, New York is very small VB. Watermill and Bridgehampton. Now, these are, you know, Bridgehampton is the least likely because that's just all small lots, there's not much opportunity there. And all historic district, so I don't even know that that's really gonna work there. And so that's the idea behind creating the mixed use zone, um, we wanna, you know. Develop this code collaboratively and give, and get feedback like you've done today and just tell us what you wanna see. If we're on the right track, what do you want to do?
You wanted it right now?
Well, I'd like to just, I'd like to see criteria laid out, um, specifically like what we would, would see with a potential hypothetical development. Um, uh, you know, separated between sort of the secondary categories, like, I, I like the idea of the overlay being. A, a secondary set of criteria that we would vote to lay on a particular portion. So if there's a way we can emphasize that in the code, that would be, that would be great. That, that's how I would feel comfortable with it.
Okay, and it's still going to follow that same pro- two step process, you would elect to consider it, you have development standards, you'd have standards on use. You would ask to see a development plan and you decide whether or not you want to even elect to consider that plan.
And, and if, and if that developer were to come before the board, um, obviously, I mean. You or somebody from your office would be there to discuss with the board. I know, they generally do, I know, like, well, I just wanna make sure, just so as the board does its due diligence, that, that, uh. Those that are fluent with the code and, and planning are there to sort of guide the board's decision making, cause I think that's, that's an important.
So you would always look at, you know, what the findings would be, what's the needs for that particular hamlet, what is the comp plan suggest, the comp plan. Always and every time is talking about revitalizing the downtown, there's not, this is fully consistent. With every version of every comp plan that we've ever done, so it's from nineteen seventy on, there it is always saying. Revitalize the downtown, create a, you know, center of central activity, a hub, a place. So it, um, you know, is it the appropriateness of the, of the site, the environmental considerations? Um, the need for, you know, any offsite improvements to get there, maybe they do need to put a sidewalk, that's not PDD, that's just like, you know. Hey, you're gonna have to fix this road or deal with this, put in a light, you know, we don't know, um.
But I, we, it's important for us to know, like, for example, what in the areas are, is allowed now for offices and for retail. I mean, is this creating more opportunity for that? Or is this just more opportunity for housing, I'm, I just wanna understand how it's different from the VB. You know, mixed use that's already in place.
The VB right now allows for a mix of uses, the parking is one per one eighty. Um, we would, in mixed use, you'd be able to, like Teresa was mentioning, share parking, um. The VB has, hearkens back to another section of code called apartments in certain districts, which allows only. Like one apartment for every twelve hundred and fifty square feet of ground floor, which is. You know, non economically, and I think we talked about this like to death in the Hampton Bays. Time about how no one, the reason why it's not been built is cause it's not viable to build a whole building with one apartment, you know. Or two, like that's not enough, what is enough?
So couldn't we just change that to be six hundred, you know, one, one apartment for every six hundred feet of ground floor? Uh, you know, space, wouldn't that accomplish the same kinda thing?
Right, but you, um, so you're saying that just changing that code and putting them to the planning board, that you wouldn't wanna code that people would come to you. With a master plan for development, such as they do want in Hampton Bays.
I'm just trying to understand the distinction between the two things that are being, one is in place and one's being. Asked for us to propose to you to get, you know, you're trying to get feedback from us.
Right, well, the one that's in place is one by, you have a parcel in village business. It's zero set, lot line setbacks, it's a hundred percent, you know, the coverage is full, you know, it's at the lot line, it's zero or fifteen. And they're just supposed to be stacked and that's it, um.
Just, just so you're aware, under the town code right here, uh, one fifty eight, three thirty, one fifty eight. It says, only one apartment shall be permitted for each office or visitor shop, but no more than two in a building. So in a VB zone, you can only have two apartments, even though you may have like a six acre site.
Yeah.
You can't have standalone housing, right?
It, I believe it has to be above a store.
Wait, could you, Teresa, go back, just say what you said again, I didn't get it.
You're under the standards, you, in village business, it says, only one apartment shall be permitted for each office or retail store. But no more than two in any building, except, uh, that the number is increased.
Only one, but no more than two, what does that mean?
Yeah, so you can have a maximum of two.
So you can have a six thousand square foot building, it says one per retail or shop or retail.
Oh, so if you could fit two shops down below or three shops, then you'd still own that too.
We're faced with in today's, you know, like, that's not what, you have to recognize that people want to propose things. And we, you know, the, the, the thing right now is sorry, you can't do that and that's why you have a downtowns that are not thriving places. So what is between what is not a thriving place and what is a thriving place is what we're trying to get to. So whatever that looks like for you and your comfort zone, but also for someone to make an, um, investment in this town and be able to come. And, and that's not to say, um, you know, it's all about the developer, it's also about the people who wanna have a place to go have dinner. People who want to bring their grandkids to get ice cream.
Everybody wants downtown revitalization.
Right, so I mean.
It's just, you know, with these quog and watermill, you know, are they gonna want this too and, you know, how's it gonna impact those communities?
Pushing it on anyone, people are gonna maybe take advantage and make an application of that or they're not. But you're not changing VB, it's still VB unless you want to. So it seems frustrating, but I don't know how to get there, so I need some direction from you, so it's either a.
Right now, maybe we should look at that code, maybe that's antiquated now to say, you can only have one apartment for every one store.
It is definitely antiquated.
So why can't we just work with that instead of taking all the controls off by saying, let it's up to the board, they can do whatever they want and elect to consider and.
I, I think it's a misrepresentation to say you're taking all the controls off because we actually have more control.
Well, you're saying the board can do whatever it wants within the parameters of this code.
I know, I'm saying you're setting up the code, not that you could do whatever you want, you are legislators, so you're able to legislate a code that makes sense, that's what I mean when I say that.
What we can do.
Yeah, so I'm not saying take all controls off, I'm not saying anything like that, I'm saying let's develop a code together that makes sense for you. That makes sense for someone to make an application.
I, 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 I understand the, the goal of this and I think that it's, 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 it's a good one. Uh, but I do see what the supervisor is getting at and I, I wanna acknowledge it because it is a, a particular tool of. Of the planning board that would typically decide these things and I think I mentioned the last time that it seems as if we might be sort of taking some of what would typically go. Before the planning board and, and we're, we're evaluating it now and, and I think that we're, you know, does that set up a precedent, I think it's a, it's a genuine thought. Um, but I also believe too, at the same time, we are at a, a point in, uh, you know. Uh, our, our time here in Southampton where we have to figure out ways, uh, to best think about smart. Um, uh, approaches to ensuring we get to, uh, reaching our goals on housing and transportation and all of those things. So I, I, I just wanna say, I see both sides of it, I do wanna acknowledge what the supervisor is saying.
I don't know that I'm on a different side than you, I'm on the same side, I just wanna point that out.
The difference is the planning board is constrained by the code, so basically they can only go up to what the code says, if it says there's no more than two apartments. There's no more than two apartments, if it comes to this board, this board as a legislative body can say, you know what, you know, we see the overall plan, we can, we have this extra tool. We can, we have more leeway in that.
But as opposed to what the supervisor was suggesting, that the code can simply be amended for VB for the planning board to make those more. Uh, flexible decisions instead of the, the town board, I think, I do, I do think that, that we do have to consider what are the implications of. Future planning proposals coming before the board, uh, there, I think there are political implications for it. Um, but I, I, look, I think at the same time, we are put into this position to make decisions for the public. Um, so I see both sides of it, I'm just saying, I, 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 I get, I get where the discussion.
So the question then is, do you want a mixed use floating zone that someone can apply and you land? Or you just wanna fix VB and make like a special exception for mixed use and it does not come to you, it just goes to the planning board, we can do this either way. It's a question of what do you want?
So go back to when we were proposing an overlay district in Hampton Bays, basically from Good Ground Road to Good Ground Park. Um, it included all the properties on Good Ground Road where they could have put multifamily or more units on top of businesses if they built them there in the future. It gave everybody the ability to pretty much do the same thing. This with a five acre minimum would eliminate all that unless the owners got together. So in my mind, that's not really downtown revitalization, you're actually creating a new main street and you're hindering the main street that's there now. Cause they can't live up to those standards.
So what would you prefer?
I think we have to talk about the size of the district a little bit, I don't know.
Or maybe just amend the code that's there now, what, what's allowed in the VB, if you think it's, doesn't make sense.
Area is not zoned VB, that, that Good Ground.
It was originally in the downtown overlay.
That's out, that's gone, so we're not talking about that ever again, but like, that's not VB, unless you wanna zone it VB and then change the standards for VB.
You're talking about, you know, uh, uh, transportation, you got a train station across the street, you can't even build a house on that road, I mean, it's kinda silly, so.
So we.
I think the whole thing, I think. But I think, but I think to Rick's point, alright, we're all, we're all dancing around the elephant in the room, which is a developer in Hampton Bays. That wants to build on property that he has that aggregated over five acres. So what we're talking about is a very specific situation and I think we're gonna run into the same thing that we did by amending simply VB. Where we looked at when we were talking about doing the hotel and everything else, it, it becomes this. Thing in places where that's not what you're trying to get.
Necessarily, I mean, you can take out the five acre limitation, we just put that in, but all the other VBs, which now I can't go back to.
I like it when it comes back to us, so we have.
I think you have to have a level playing field and be able to have people in a different area, be able to come in just as much as. The Hampton Bays is not just about that.
But to Rick's point though, I think that's the area that we're focused on right now and I think. An overlay, which I know got shot down and the whole thing, but I mean, I think that that really, if you're gonna talk about revitalizing a whole area. You know, that's where the overlay comes into play and you're not then favoring a developer or an area, you're making it, you wanna see that whole area. You know, in, have some growth and potential.
Problem with that is, we were presupposing something to happen and we're not zoning, then you're saying, well, we're zoning for him.
But that's the whole thing, I would like to see in a perfect world, I would like to see what he would like, what would in really, we have a developer, right? That has property, what would he like to build on that property, I would like it to, I'd just like to see, because. Why are we going through this whole exercise, right, to, to dance around this issue as to what's afford, what, what makes this work and what makes this not work? What, what would you like to propose and that's where, I, you know, I understand the issues with the PDD. But I think it was a lot more cut and dry to have a developer come in and say, this is what I, these are gonna be the benefits, this is what I wanna land here. These are the incentives to me doing this project, now we're kind of like trying to create a PDD for somebody not knowing if they're gonna fit into that PDD.
I, I don't think that's what we set out to do here, I just wanna be clear, that's not what we're doing, but we could do that if you want to.
Here and laying out what they envision for a particular area, because it makes more sense. Because if we envision something beforehand and it doesn't materialize, then why did we waste the time?
And in this instance, if we're talking about revitalizing an entire area, what are they proposing there and what can we restrict or give? That we could give to the entire VB district to make everybody have the same piece of the, you know what I mean, like.
Could create an urban renewal area on this whole area and, or you, there's other tools here, like we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There's all these tools to your ability, so you can.
So I like what, originally what Michael said in beginning.
You can call it, you don't have to, it doesn't have to be urban renewal, but you can call it downtown revitalization. And when someone wants to propose a downtown revitalization, they come in and you can land it.
It's the same thing that you're saying, it's just calling it something else.
It, it's whatever, how do you create the tool for someone to, Hampton Bays, East Quogue, wherever it is. And to someone to say, here's what I wanna do and you be able to look at it, that's what we're trying to get to and do something. Because as it stands now, and to your point, if you want, and I said in the beginning, if you wanna just overhaul VB. We can overhaul VB, which sounds like is what you.
Well, to Maria's point though, to overhaul VB, I would like to know what people are looking to put in VB that we don't currently allow. So that we can then take those ideas and go, okay, we would, uh, we would allow this, we wouldn't allow that, I mean. At least we have a starting point, if we don't know what people are looking for, the change in the code for, which you would have a better understanding of that than any of us because. All these developers come to you to say, what is allowed, this is what a kinda, what I wanna do, is this, would this work here, so.
Everything everybody wants to do doesn't work.
But I would just like to see if.
And, and I'm not trying to sit here and create something every, for everyone, I'm just trying to create a fair and equitable system. For you to be able to evaluate.
But I also, I also to Rick's point, I want to be able to bring up the entire area and if there are uses they don't currently have, that somebody else is gonna get only. Simply because they have over five acres, that's not fair.
Okay, so.
That's why I asked how big this, uh, floaty zone could be, so if we include the developer, could it include, say, the downtown?
It could include what you think it should include, so you can tell me, you know what, it's anything from a half acre. To a maximum of ten acres.
Gonna depend on what we're allowing.
Minimum, you can have a maximum, you can say it's no minimum.
Why don't we do this, why don't we come up with, uh, for our next work session, I don't know if the board agrees, uh, you come up with a, a draft. Proposal outline of what we're talking about here, what we would like to see in this and I think that's a great way for us to kind of hash it out. And figure out what we wanna keep, what we wanna.
We're too in the abstract right now.
You tell us what people have asked for in their downtowns that you think would work from a planning perspective in. Watermill, East Quogue, Hampton Bays, you know, you know, what would work there?
No one has asked for, the only real person that's asking for anything at this point in time is the Hampton Bays one.
Right, but we have to make it work for everywhere.
Right, but, or not, like, I don't, you know, I don't think.
But Hampton Bays is potentially getting a sewer district, which a lot of these other areas will not have, so, I mean, a lot of these things are gonna be constrained by sanitation.
We wanted to just bring up that there's a downtown revitalization initiative going on and, um, proposals are due by Friday, November seventh. And that would this, you know, you could get from between four and a half million to ten million dollars to work on planning this all out. With this, you know, so maybe that's what is the better op- option here, so that way it's more a public process. And you can, um, work collaboratively to create a downtown revitalization plan. That everybody can work with and be happy with and submit that to get funding and submit that as the basis of what you'll zone. And then work that out, I mean, that's another way to go.
This is the same program where Riverhead got there.
Yes.
I, just, just to go back, VB versus a floating zone, if we, if we change the VB standards, that applies across the board. What's applicable in Watermill is gonna be applicable in Flanders and Riverside, right, and, and that's not necessarily what the community wants. Whereas if you do the floating zone, it's similar to like an MF forty four, the opportu- the planning, the public has an opportunity to weigh in, say, okay, well. This is the direction we wanna go and, and you can tinker and tailor with the floating zone. Uh, and then all the, the details get worked out at the planning board, so there's a little bit more flexibility in a floating zone that you land on properties. And similar to the zone change we did for Dan's papers, you can say, you know what, this zone change for you is not gonna work. Why don't you go and talk to these neighbors next to you, maybe you can include them in your plan and that might be a way to incorporate properties that are smaller. That have less development potential under current zoning into a larger plan.
Well, the idea was to envelop the standards, a mixed use, uh, category and someone doesn't walk in the door unless they're showing you a plan. That has public spaces, accounts for how we're gonna park, accounts for public streets, accounts for these things. And then proposes a plan that has mix of uses in it. So, so you kinda back into that number, it's, it's, we already learned our lesson that to, for us to presuppose a number. That may or may not work for someone is a mistake, so we just need to set out the criteria that someone can come and apply under versus. Planning it all out for someone, I, if I'm gonna plan it out for them, they should plan it out and come to you.
I know it's a lot of work for you.
Try to plan it out.
I know it's a lot of work for you, but I think right now we're talking too in the abstract to like. I know it's a lot of work for you, but I think right now we're talking too in the abstract to like see kind of what we're discussing as far as uses and, you know, like what this floating zone would allow and not allow. I think, I think for us to know some of those parameters would help us, uh, to me anyway, wrap our heads around like what are we talking about?
And I would say a, a, an overview, um, an outline of what a, a floating zone, the criteria as I mentioned that I'd like to see, if you could try to draft something like that out with the secondary, uses that would exist within that, that, that zone. I think Bill agreed that that's something that would be useful, so it would be nice.
Like a menu, like, so when they come in, we know exactly, you know, they, what they're asking for. You don't need to have numbers where it's, you know.
Doesn't have to be specific, but something that we can kinda just work off of.
Like a code. Code that we can give you as a draft. That you can review and give us feedback.
I think that's what we need.
That would be great. But, but the reason, what you just said, Theresa, that it might not work for every community, but the reasons that, I think some communities might not want it, is that very reason. You know, maybe uh, Watermill, just feels like it doesn't work for them, but Hampton Bay's feels like it wouldn't work for them either. But because we have the floating zone, we can do it in Hampton Bay's, you know, so it's.
What, like Watermill Station was a side plan that I worked on for, um, and if you just look down Station Road, you know that back, uh, whole bill, all those buildings back there, it came out very nice. You could see the feature, so you kinda wanna walk down Station Road when you see that tower. And it, it was built under HOHC, which is not this, but if it were VB, like they, they wanted to put like apartments above, but there was, restrictions and Watermill community would have been happy to have. Apartments above, but they weren't able to do it.
But maybe not this.
But if a mixed use zone was allowed, maybe that would provide that ability and it would look just as good.
So maybe everybody should have it then. We shouldn't just, um, that, so we should change the VB then, so it's across the board and not just.
You know, what everyone wants to do.
But then that makes it the planning board than the.
But we see the code, we form the code and then we give it to the planning board to implement.
You have to give, in that case, you have to give a number of how many apartments and stuff like that. We, you might, some areas, just say, in Watermill, okay, that's a nice area. I, I drive down there all the time. It could, that area could maybe fit twenty apartments above there. But if you do the same unit in Wayne Scott, maybe you could only have six there.
Well, that would depend on the size, right?
You know, and the need.
Square footage.
Alright, so what I'm hearing is that you wanna see what a reconstructed VB would look like versus a draft overlay floating zone code. You want both.
In addition.
In addition to, and you'll provide me with some feedback on the draft overlay.
I like the draft overlay.
I like the overlay, but I just wanna know that there's limitations.
Or that there's more inclusivity is what you're saying.
Some guide, like guide rails that would, on the, on the maximum side, so then, then you have a little more control that way. I think that's, yeah. By the way, not tomorrow, in a few days.
First, I'll be giving you the Affordable Housing Overlay District Code. That, you'll see that first.
Thank you so much. Working very hard on this.
Thanks to you both. I know it's not easy. Trying to get us to understand where you're coming from and getting feedback. Yeah, it's a little too abstract.
Take the bullets out, take the bullets out.
Alright, so that brings us to the town council supervisors liaison updates. Rick, do you wanna get us started?
Yeah, I just wanna give a shout out to the Hampton Bay's Fire Department. There was a considerable brush fire and partial building structure fire. Um, close to, across the street from Macy's basically last night. Uh, it did reignite in the middle of the night. There was one burn victim airlifted to Stony Brook Hospital last night. But uh, Hampton Bay's did a hell of a job yesterday, so kudos to them. Um, for Labor Day weekend, it was a rough weekend.
Cause of the fire was?
Uh, they think the um, there was a ATV that maybe was being fired up and the fuel may have ignited. The um, Parks and Rec had a rough weekend. I know we are really shorthanded. Uh, you know, a lot of kids went back to school, a lot of people went back to their regular jobs. Um, so on behalf of the Parks Department, I just wanna say thank you for your patience. You know, we had a rough time with, with lifeguards and bathrooms and so on. Um, and I did wanna take a minute, uh, Michael and I are both liaisons for the Youth Bureau. We got an update from Tracy. So if I could take a moment, he goes, I wanted to summarize the Youth Bureau successes this summer prior to the work session tomorrow morning. The Youth Bureau had a very successful and busy summer. We served two hundred and fifty-five youth between four programs. In some programs, we maxing it, maxed out our ability to accept additional participants. Nature Navigators twenty twenty-five is the Youth Bureau's day camp program for middle school students. This program is provided for this age since this population has aged out of traditional summer camp programs. And are too young to seek employment. Uh, great job by coordinator Alex Catalano, who uh, coordinated the nature, nature navigators. The broader horizon programs this year, the Youth Bureau is able to bring twelve youth as town employees. And three paid through the County Department of Labor onto the program. Peter Strecker coordinated broader horizons and did a lot of work arranging placements with six town departments, three not-for-profits and one business. Pool nights at SYS, since there are no public pools on East End, the Youth Bureau offers this program, for kindergarten to eighth graders as an opportunity to swim in a pool under the supervision of a lifeguard. Kara Wingfield per, uh, coordinates this program as well as being a major help to our other programs. I'm shortening it as best I can, guys. Tuesdays On The Go is one of the most popular programs, maxing out at fifty-nine youth. Weekly, the students in grades five through ten are offered an opportunity to attend different adventures across Long Island. So it goes on and on, but uh, you know, Sandcastle and all the programs that they run, um, they had a really good summer. So looking forward to the fall.
And Rick, uh, thank you for um, all your work with the Youth Bureau this year and, and um, your help with a lot of the events. Thank you for helping, with Battle of the Bands. You were there, it was great to see you there. I'm looking forward to uh, a lot of the uh, uh, musical events that they're gonna be doing next year, the competitions. I also wanna acknowledge uh, Tracy and Alexis's work with, uh, specifically the LGBT Network. Last week I attended um, the LGBT Network Summit. Um, where they talked a little bit about some of the challenges for our LGBTQ plus community. Um, and um, you know, I know our, our Youth Bureau is doing a lot of work to help uh, connect with some of the GSAs in all the schools and it's just great creating that sense of community. So it's, they were doing great work.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Actually, Michael's area, but I just wanted to borrow it for a few seconds. The animal shelter, I dropped some stuff there off in um, Saturday to the temporary shelter for the cats on McGee Street. And roughly it was like twenty volunteers busy putting stuff up on those doors, cutting doors, putting, wire mesh, tenanted cats. There's a lot of cats in there. I tried to adopt one, I wanted to bring it home, but my wife said no, but I'm still trying. I have pictures of it showing her that my kids are on my side, but my wife said no. The floor, I spoke to Nick, so I wanna make sure that all the work's gonna be done there. It's gonna be, people follow through and, get, try to get the shelter up and going as soon as possible again. Um, so I spoke to Nick who's doing a good job on that. He said, new, they're gonna work on, start, work on the floor on the fifteenth of September. Um, the Septic is gonna work on right after that. Um, as soon as we sign the contract with Chesterfield. Peter is sending some of his maintenance crew down there now to stop painting inside, do it in-house to get it done quicker and cheaper for the town. So I just wanna put a shout out, you know, for the animal shelter. They're doing a very wonderful job under the new leadership they have there. Then outside of this building, um, we're going, in the next couple of weeks, pardon me, next two, two weeks, we're gonna have a meeting to see what's gonna happen exactly to the outside, when they're gonna start it. So all the town employees and the people who come and visit town hall will see that there'll be scaffolds and, and the bones are gonna start getting, have the cement work done and painting outside. Then on September tenth, this is very exciting, they opened bids. Gonna open the bids for the West Hampton Senior and Rec Center for this kids and the seniors.
That's exciting.
Yes.
What time is that gonna be? Do we know?
Two o'clock. We have someone there inside.
Very good, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, I, on Sunday I went to uh, the Hampton Synagogue, had a, in West Hampton, had a dedication of, to a Hooli sculpture that um, was blown glass and uh, it's, to, in memory of the one and a half million doll, uh, one and a half million children who were uh, killed in the Holocaust. And it was uh, very moving and you should take a drive by if you get a chance to get over to West Hampton Beach. And then earlier this week, I was able to sit in on a, a progress meeting with the sewer treatment uh, plant, engineer on the Riverside project and um, they're gonna come and update the board on the sixteenth, October sixteenth. And on the second, Historical Concepts is gonna come in and talk to us. So those two dates will be important and we'll get a lot, all the information we need on moving forward. I think they're just about done with their thirty percent engineering design and then, you know, they'll be moving forward with the sixty percent. So stay tuned. Michael?
Alright, so uh, speaking of the animal shelter, I'm teaming up with uh, our town clerk, Sunday Schermeier, and uh, Ryan Murphy, and we're doing a uh, pet licensing and vaccination day on September thirtieth at twelve o'clock PM. Um, we uh, you know. It's gonna take place right here at town hall. Um, yeah, and we're gonna, you know, really, you know, what has been observed is there's been a drop in a lot of our, uh, pet licenses or dog licenses and um, it's a good time to uh, remind folks of the importance of licensing their dogs. But also to vaccinate them as there's obviously a, a broader public safety, public safety imperative behind that. And I don't know, uh, clerk, did you, madam clerk, did you wanna say a few words on that or?
I am looking forward to working with you on this project. Uh, the dog licensing has been uh, low. And we're trying to reinvigorate people to uh, actually come in and license their dogs because it's really, not as much about the license as it is about the rabies vaccine. It's public and health, uh, health and welfare, welfare. Um, so we've partnered with Ryan Murphy because he um, has the staff, that will go out and follow up when uh, people don't renew their licenses and we can, you know, check in and see how we can encourage them to, to get that done. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity and bringing in the vaccination component, we're going to have a table set up. Where as soon as those dogs are vaccinated, they can come right over to the table. We'll have a laptop out there and we can license them on the spot.
And the.
And treats too, I would hope I have treats.
But the shelter, the shelter are the ones that are playing the role in the vaccinations and uh, they, they certainly wanna see that we're, you know, we're, we're doing, uh, our, our help with them. And also helping out is uh, Humane Long Island as well. They'll be partnering with us too.
Well, maybe we can encourage some adoptions to take place as well, right?
So the dogs, what are you vaccinating? You just have to bring the paperwork?
Well, they're gonna be vaccinated on the spot there. We're having a vaccination clinic.
Yes.
If I wanted to.
Yes, you should bring your dog in and get a license. That would be great. I might bring mine as well.
And I just wanna mention too, um, well, thank you, Sunday. I really appreciate it. Um, it's a, it's a great cause. And also, um, I uh, partnered up with uh, Assemblyman Tommy John Scivoni over the weekend and we did go to the Shinakok Powaw. It was a excellent celebration, a great time to honor the history of the Shinakok Nation. We saw a lot of folks, a lot of friends and neighbors there. Um, Denise Dennis, uh, Brian Polite, so many folks from our, our community and around the country were there, so it was great to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, September is National Recovery Month. We'll have a, a resolution on Tuesday, uh, designated it as such in the town of Southampton. I'm gonna wanna thank Ryan Murphy and his staff who lit the big duck purple. Um, and Peter Guardiello in this building who has made our kupola is purple for the month of September. Um, I did also receive on the East Quag Park, Park District, a lot of a positive feedback from the community. Everyone's really excited. They're excited to see the changes that are coming and, you know, the upkeep of, of Main Street and some of the removal of the trees. Um, so it's, it's really been a lot of positive feedback on that, which has been great. It's been really great to see the community come together to support that. Um, I also do wanna bring to everyone's attention, if you're available on this Saturday from ten to two, is the Watermill Car Show, in Watermill and benefits the Watermill Windmill. So it's always a good time, lots of locals, lots of people there and uh, great cars, so.
Thank you.
And they're doing a beautiful job.
They are.
Really looks nice when you drive through.
Yeah, it does.
Every village should have a. Give a plug for Southampton.
Alright, well, if no one else has any other comments, then I move to go into executive session to discuss acquisitions, personnel and litigation and then close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.